I'm not going to have my mask on.
Robert, are you talking? Can you say hello so I can see if I can hear people?
Hey Brad.
Oh, hey Liz, thank you.
We can't hear you guys.
Nope, I hear you, Liz and Brad, that's it.
I'm muted, but I can't hear Trey or the mayor.
Yeah, I haven't heard them either. I can hear all of you.
The four of us are going to get a lot done. I think the mayor heard that.
Yeah, Trey, let me know there's an issue in chambers that they're working on for sound right now, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, IT is coming down to work on it, so.
Thank you for keeping us posted. Luke, you look like you're going to rob a liquor store.
What? I'm not familiar with that analogy. Do I literally look like that?
No, Luke, Luke looks like he's, because his face is all like, you know, completely covered with a mask.
Yeah, kind of like, a little bit like a bandit, I could see it. We should be careful, he can't fight back right now, so.
Chris, can you try that again? I'm not hearing anything. Okay, Jessica, Liz, Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
They are going to scatter, they're going to use their laptops in other places, and I think Trey's getting on his laptop in the council chambers, Mayor's going up to his office, and we'll just connect up that way.
Okay.
Be a minute or two.
Okay, thanks Brad.
Can people hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, Trey.
Can you hear me now?
Can you, I can hear you, yes. So he must be coming, Chris, I heard Chris, but it sounded like he was coming through your laptop, he was far away.
I think, am I better now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I'm ready to roll.
You can manage him to stay healthy.
Lock on.
I know, right? Yeah, me too. I feel the same way, it's closing in on me.
That's right, same, good. Sorry. Cut that, thank you.
This has been a test of the emergency broadcast system. It is only a test.
All right, I see we've got a quorum, everyone's present. My only question is, are we, it looks like we're recording, so we're just going to go ahead and get started, I think we've got this going, so. I'll call this meeting to order for the record, it is January 12th, 2021, Tuesday at 4:50 PM, we'll begin our city council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Burrow. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burr.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Simson.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we adopt the agenda, but first, excuse me, I just noticed we have a, we have a, we have a change of the agenda. We'd like to amend executive session to include 74-2061D. But other than that, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
A motion, a second, is there a discussion on the motion? If no, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, and the agenda is agreed to. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign it for the clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, is there a discussion? If not, all of them favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, and the agenda, the consent agenda is adopted, there are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will go into department commission reports. First up is the annual report from our human resources department, so I'll turn this over to Director Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me see, I wanna make sure I'm screen sharing properly, it's the first time I've presented on Zoom, so I will see if this works, please let me know if it does not. Can you all see the presentation? Okay, thank you. Again, good, again, thank you so much, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we very much appreciate your time today as we present to you our annual department report. Let's talk a little bit about human resources. You've seen this graphic before, but it still remains true today, this is all of the different areas of HR support that our department provides to departments and to our employees. Our HR team consists of six staff members. We've recently had a new team member join us, his name is Josh Handling, if you haven't had an opportunity to meet him yet. He is our new administrative assistant here at our front desk. And we invite you to welcome Josh to the city, we welcomed him to the HR department, we are so glad that he is here. So we often get asked, being a department of six, looking at that bubble graphic of everything that we do, how do we do what we do each and every day? And this rings true, you've seen this before, it is a joint effort with everyone in human resources. We do it by pulling together, we partner together, we help each other, we collaborate, we operate with teamwork, we have cooperation for each other. But it takes a, I've often said it before, we're small but mighty. And the only way that we can do what we do is by pulling together as one support group. So let's take a look at the 2020 project and initiatives this past year. This is an at-a-glance snapshot of HR's efforts this past year. There is a policy and compliance, employee engagement, community focus, our training and development efforts, benefit and wellness initiatives, compensation, employee relations. And in the midst of all of that, the focus we had on our internal department processes and the improvements that we've made this year. So let's take a deeper look. So in regards to the strategic objectives, under the current strategic plan, we had seven initiatives.
Yes, Councilman.
Sorry to interrupt, Crystal, are the slides supposed to be advancing?
Yes, mine are advancing, are they not for you?
No.
I see strategic objective status, they have been advancing for me.
Yeah, they've been advancing for me as well.
Oh, I'm frozen, sorry.
They're not, it's not in presentation mode, though, Crystal, just FYI.
I'm showing it is, how do I?
Everything's freezing on my end, I don't know what's going on.
Do you want me to pause, or?
You can proceed, maybe it'll unfreeze, don't wait for me. I can hear you, so I'm tracking. Go ahead.
I apologize. So this is a snapshot look at the strategic objectives that we've had over the course of the last five years. As a team, we were able to accomplish 71% of our strategic objectives. We have two remaining, one is regarding promoting cultural and workforce diversity, and we are anticipated to complete that in March of this year. And also identifying specific training needs. And we are anticipating to complete that April of this year. So we're looking forward to getting those closed out as well, and completing all of the objectives that were tied to our current plan, as well as focusing on the new strategic plan and the tasks that will come with that. So let's take a moment and talk about employment. So employment, recruitment, and staffing is a significant amount of time on behalf of the HR staff that we spend working towards hiring the top talent that we have here at the city. On this slide, you're going to see that we have primary responsibility for managing and insisting with all employee-related matters. And this gives you just a little bit of a snapshot of where we are as a workforce. So you'll see in the upper right-hand area, the average city retention rate for 2020 was 90.09%. The average years of service collectively amongst our workforce is seven point, little over seven years of experience, and you'll see the breakdown there. For 20-plus years of service, we have 27 employees at the city who fall in that category. 66 fall in the 15 years to little less than 20 years. And 74 employees fall in the 10 to 14.99. 86 fall in the five years to almost 10 years, and then 238 of our employees fall in the zero to little less than five years. You'll see there in the lower left-hand corner of your slide, the average years of service by departments and division. And then over on the right, the highest years of service by department and position. And we wanna take a moment on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the senior leadership team, and on behalf of human resources. We wanna thank all of our employees for their dedicated years of service here at the city. So when we talk about employment, we talk about our workforce, we also talk about recruitment, and we spend a significant amount of time in the recruitment efforts across the city. We are responsible for assisting applicants with their application to the city, we're responsible for assisting employees and managers with all phases of the employment process. We oversee recruitment, interviewing, job offers, the drug and alcohol testing, background checks, except for law enforcement, et cetera. It is a full-cycle process here at the city. So you'll see here that this year, the city received a little over 4,000 external applications for employment. The average cost of recruitment this past year was almost $44,000. We had 77 job postings that resulted in 126 positions being filled. To support those recruitment efforts, we processed 126 pre-employment appointments. Facilitated and, or excuse me, coordinated 103 drug and alcohol tests. We conducted approximately 635 reference checks. And when I say we, I will say that this is solely done by Jessica Moore in our office, she primarily handles all of the reference calls for every employee that we hire. The average cost of recruitment for employment search was about $298. And our average time to fill last year was 99.68 days to fill a position, and that time to fill is reflected from when a position became vacant until the position is filled and a new hire has started and is attending orientation. One of the things here in regards to recruitment this year that was a challenge was COVID. And how we navigated recruitment efforts through COVID to ensure that the departments had the staff that they needed to continue to provide the services and support that they offered. And so the HR team came together and we looked at each of our recruitment processes, our pre-employment processes, our staffing processes, to identify how could we shift it to a remote environment during the time of need this past year. And we were successfully able to do that. Other agencies in the valley had a hiring freeze, and our city continued with our recruitment and staffing efforts to deliver those top-talent employees to the departments who were in need of the staff to continue their services on a daily basis. You may have heard that HR and IT partnered together this year to take a look at building a new recruitment tool. So up until this past year, HR was operating with a tool that was at least 10 to 12 years old, it was the tool that was in place when I came on board, and it was a tool that was internally developed at that point in time by a high school intern working with the city, and it was a great tool at that point in time, and it carried us for a good amount of time. However, it was time to upgrade, it was time to have a fully-developed, fully-functional tool that provided us greater functionality than the tool that we had. So the new tool that we have is called eRecruit. It does provide internal and external application of employment tool for the citizens as well as our internal employees. It gives us greater functionality, much easier to use. We're proud to say it's mobile-friendly, so you can apply from any mobile device, not just at a computer at your, on your desk. It does give individuals the opportunity to create a profile when looking for employment or different jobs within the city. This new tool has reduced the time it takes for an individual to fill out an application. They can track their application status and where it's at through the recruitment process here at the city. They can subscribe for job alerts if they have particular interest in a particular type of job or a particular department within the city. It does allow us to give designated department access, so it helps us with communications between human resources and the hiring departments filling positions. It gives us greater efficiency and transparency, as we also are working towards a paperless recruitment effort here at the city. And we do wanna pause and give a huge thank you on behalf of the HR team to the IT team and their partnership in the development of this tool. Because it has been a collaborative effort, and they have been absolutely wonderful to work with. Specifically, have to call out a kudos to Nick, Kat, and Christie on this team as they've helped us build this tool, test this tool, and implement this tool. We're in phase three of this tool, we're going into phase four where it's going to start being, being able to provide to us the opportunity to pull metrics, data, reports, and numbers out of the system and the tool rather than from a manual process. So we very much appreciate everyone in IT who's helped us with this. Compensation and benefit administration is another aspect of human resources. We are responsible for assembling, managing, and administering employee compensation. There's a lot that is involved with compensation administration. HR co-chairs the compensation committee. We develop employee communications. We provide guidance to departments and department hiring managers in regards to wages to ensure that they are in alignment with our compensation program. The compensation committee is tasked with reviewing our compensation program on a regular basis. HR participates in and reviews the results of many salary studies throughout the year. We provide guidance to departments regarding new hires and job offers to ensure alignment with our compensation program. We facilitate third-party market analysis, or a third-party review of our market and our compensation programs to ensure that they are market-competitive. Those are all different things that take place at different points in time throughout the year. It's an ongoing process and it evolves every year. Benefit administration is another bubble, if you will, of responsibility that we have at the city. You'll see there that we are responsible for assembling, managing, and assisting employees regarding their benefits. And that is not just a one-time event, such as our annual enrollment, we have a staff, a benefit staff here who help employees on a daily basis with the questions that they have, the guidance that they need, the resources, the contact information. Employee benefits typically include health, disability, life insurance, retirement accounts, vacation accruals, sick leave accruals, et cetera. We have a benefits committee that meets regularly to evaluate our medical, dental, and vision plans. This year, the HR staff facilitated 26 open enrollment virtual meetings along with 18 virtual one-on-one sessions. This was significant this year, typically, we've done those in person, where we've offered the meetings, we've gone across the city, we've joined staff meetings to deliver our open enrollment presentations, and then we've provided computer lab sessions to help individuals navigate their enrollment on our employee self-service portal. With COVID this year, we had to shift that to a remote platform, so we conducted our meetings virtually. In addition to that, we still provided one-on-one sessions to employees who needed to reach out, we did those virtually to help them be able to navigate and enroll through our employee self-service portal. The benefits team created a new benefits guide and an online benefit platform so that our employees can access their information, not just through the internal internet, but also from home. Given the challenges this year, we still were able to deliver, offer, and deliver several wellness activities. We had offered 27 challenges and/or contests. We provided COVID support and resources, as well as nutritional and wellbeing, wellbeing webinars. And we continue to offer FMLA and workers' compensation support and guidance, as well as the employee assistance program and the services they support or provide. Here's a slide that gives you a little bit of an overview of our Wellness Works programs. We started with our Wellness Work activities prior to COVID, and we continued through COVID. I will say that our benefits team did a great job this year in transitioning our in-person activities that we run yearly to a, basically a remote offering so that we could be compliant with the COVID restrictions and keep our employees safe. But while doing that, we still had number of events that we were still able to offer and that we completed, and you'll see a list of those there. We're proud to say that this year, we were also the recipient of the American Heart Association Bronze Level Workplace Achievement Award, and this is our third year running in receiving this award, so we're very proud of that, and we continue to strive for these achievements through our wellness program in future years. We also have training development here at the city and the offerings that we have to invest in our employees. This is a snapshot of the different offerings and what we were able to do this year, so we offer new employee orientation. You'll see that we still offered 26 sessions this year to ensure that we had the staffing needed to provide the services that we do to our public. It is a partnership between HR and our, and IT, and we generally offer it every two weeks. We have a leadership training program that is comprised of trainings, lunch and learns, and self-development opportunities for our leadership and senior managers, executive coaching is a part of that program. We also have succession planning here at the city. We are in our third year this year, we have 56 key positions that have been identified, and this past year, the departments reviewed and updated all of those succession plans. We also participate in the ICRA risk management discount training program each year. And as a result of our participation as a city this past year in 2020, the city did receive an $18,484 discount towards our annual premium. We have an internal best training program. This year, we had 187 employees participate over the course of 15 sessions that were offered with 42 and a half hours of course instruction. And we also offered avoiding discriminatory harassment training across the city. We have one more department to go and we'll be wrapping up this year. COVID played a role in how much we could offer this year, and so in, for example, in our best training, most of that is instructor-led. And so we've taken a pause in, in with. And so we've taken a pause in, in with COVID to determine how can we move it forward now that we have remote workers and, and on a virtual platform? And so we're pleased to say that we will be resuming the best program and other training services through the remote platforms via teams so that our employees can still get the training that they want through a virtual platform and keep that moving. So we're excited to, to bring that here in the next month or so. In addition to our internal programs, we also have an education reimbursement program that is offered to our employees. This is a snapshot of the utilization, the number of participants, and the total funds that are expended on behalf of the city to invest in the growth and development of our employees as they pursue educational interests. Another area of responsibility is employee engagement. We have an HR team here that is passionate about promoting a culture of employee engagement where all of the work here by our employees is meaningful, our employees are valued, and that the teamwork is celebrated. These are a few examples of what we were able to accomplish this year citywide. We did part, offer and participate in a United Way campaign. That campaign this year was different. We had to transition it to be more virtual and more online rather than the in-person activities that we've had in the past. And as a result of that campaign, we were able to raise a little over $5,600 towards the United, United Way campaign and the needs of individuals in the, in our local area. We also celebrated 67 employees for their years of service here at the city. We celebrate those in five-year increments. We traveled either across the city prior to COVID or during COVID, we transitioned those to a remote platform to still ensure that we were recognizing the years of service of the employees who are dedicated to the work that they do on behalf of the city every day. In addition to that, we also participated in our Do the Right this past year. In 2020, everyone, every department was responsible for offering and bringing a focus to a Do the Right event, and so ours was themed caught spreading kindness. We were excited and happy to participate that and bring that across the city for Do Policy administration and compliance is an ongoing focus of HR, something that we're required to do, it's something that we need to do. Here are a few examples of those efforts this year. We had some new policy developments. We have our remote work policy, a paid parental leave policy. We have the temporary policies that were in place for the emergency paid sick leave and the emergency FMLA. We also had pandemic emergency paid leave administration this year. As noted, we developed the temporary policies that we were required to provide. We administered those leaves each and every day, and we ensured that we were compliant with the federal regulations of the policies that were offered through the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. In addition to being federally compliant, we also take a look at our internal processes to ensure that we are still compliant with ongoing changes. One of those focuses this past year was our veterans' preference processes. We had an audit of our processes. We reviewed and updated our internal procedures. We incorporated our veterans' preference process into our e-recruitment tool to ensure that we are compliant with the federal regulations and the expectations when recruiting. In addition to that, as I noted before under training and development, we facilitated avoiding discriminatory harassment training. We have one more department to go and we will be wrapping up that department over the summer of this year. And we want to take a moment to pause and say thank you to Joe Borton. Joe, you have been our council liaison this past year. We greatly appreciate the time, the commitment, your partnership, your support, your questions. We couldn't have done it without you, and we wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done in that partnership with HR, and we continue to look forward to working with you in the future. And then we also want to take a moment to say hello to Jessica. Welcome to the team. You're going to be our council liaison this year. You and I have already met, but on behalf of the HR team, we're very glad that you're here and we are looking forward to working with you in 2021. And with that, I stand, AKA I'm sitting at my desk for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Crystal. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Oh, I was just wondering when we'll receive a presentation with the results of the All-Employed Engagement Survey and have an opportunity to dig into that.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman Schrader. We will be providing the employee engagement survey results at our upcoming annual city employee meeting. In addition to that, I have a meeting with the council president this week to share with him the council results and discuss how to disseminate that amongst each and every one of you so that you have an opportunity to review that and then, of course, ask us any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Most organizations I've been part of, the leadership team gets an anonymous breakdown of results by department, and, and then they're able to see if we have any, you know, challenges. Is, is that type of format what you're eventually going to provide us in some type of a report? Or how does that, how, how will that work here?
We've just started getting the results from our third-party vendor who provided the anonymous information. So the senior leadership team is in the process of looking at that information now, and then we'll be coming forward with results to all of you. So what that looks like at this point in time, I don't know yet, but we'll keep you communicated and let you know what that's going to look like and when.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, real quick, Crystal, in the avoiding discriminatory harassment training, you mentioned you wrapping up training later this year. You've got one department to go. It's been a citywide training. I'm, I'm curious, is that going to continue in new employee orientation or is it going to be repeated citywide in, in the future? How do, how do you keep people up to date on that?
Councilmember Hoagland, that's a great question. One of the things that the HR department will be focused on this year is an onboarding program that will follow an employee from new employee orientation, and we will have components of that to address respectful workplace, avoiding discriminatory harassment trainings, those types of things. And then in addition to that, it's recommended by our ICRAP legal counsel that we, as a citywide initiative, offer this type of training and other types of training at least on a, every other year cycle. So we're going to incorporate it in both aspects.
Thank you, Crystal. Mr. Mayor.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
I could, is that you, Councilman Cavanagh?
I did speak up, yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Crystal, when it comes to the Wellness Works program, is that all staff-led or is there any consultant or third-party vendor that's involved?
Councilmember Cavanagh, that is staff-led. However, we do have a wellness committee that comes together that is comprised of employees across the city who work together to develop the offerings that we give here at the city to keep that fresh, to keep that moving, to keep it updated.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, follow up if I may.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Crystal, what percentage do you kind of anticipate of staff time we're spending on the wellness program?
Councilmember Cavanagh, that's a great question. I don't have that information in front of me. I would be happy to get with Christina who manages our wellness deliverables here at the city and see if we can get that information and get it back out to all of you following our meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Crystal, that'd be great, and I guess a, a little background to the, to the question. I think our wellness program is really, really important, and I think that you and, and the team do a great job of providing a lot of different program offerings for our employees. I also know that your department continues to be in high demand from our growing employee base, and it might be at a, at a turning point where we may want to look at seeing if there's a third-party service that can continue to meet the needs of our employees without making this to be overly burdened for our, our great staff in your department. So something maybe for us to consider as we go into budget season.
Thank you, Councilmember Cavanagh. I'll get that information for you and you in the council, and I've also taken note of the information you just shared with us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just a general comment, I, I really appreciate getting the presentation, Crystal, and I think especially when I was new to council, you know, the first time we had an annual report, it was really informative. It was important to learn about what the HR department does. I, I was thinking though, for these annual reports, I'm wondering if maybe we want to provide the slides ahead of time, then, and I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but council could review the slides ahead of time so we could focus our time on questions and challenges. I just want to make sure we get an opportunity to dig into things like the survey and, and things like that later in the year, maybe that are a little bit meatier to have a chance to ask a lot of questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader, for your suggestion. I've captured that and I'll carry it forward and, and we'll bring that back to you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just for, for what it's worth, I, I thoroughly agree with Councilmember Schrader's recommendation. You know, even with our, our, our next agenda item, the staff were kind enough to get us the slides to help us be better prepared. You know, as we all have kind of a good understanding as the department, at least here at year two, where all this council's been intact, maybe an opportunity for us to do less year review and, and more maybe digging one step further, just a suggestion.
Council, any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you, Crystal, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Council, we, we are 5:22. Just looking at what we have left on this agenda, I want to try to maybe, if we can get some perspective on what we think the six o'clock is going to look like, Mr. Nary, if we know, so we can determine if we want to move forward. Need to do, have plenty of time to do all the executive session afterwards. I don't know what you have lined up, so.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so the exec session that we were planning to do now, I think is probably going to need about a 30-minute conversation. And then on the regular session tonight, one item is asked to be continued. The second item, we did just get a late email from an adjacent property owner who is unable to attend because they have COVID and says there are unresolved public works issues in relation to their property. So I don't know if that is enough to warrant continuing the entire matter. We did have a bunch of neighbors at the P and Z level for this that are other properties adjacent to this parcel, so it may be one that we can't complete tonight. So it, it may be fairly lengthy, and then again, the second executive session may be a, a fairly lengthy discussion as well, so.
Mr. Nary, do you have people that are coming in at 5:30 specifically, or if we do it all after the six, does that work?
They're all internal staff for the 5:30, so it's, it's all staff folks that are either in the building or at, at home.
Okay.
So it's, it's perfectly fine either way, sir.
So, so council, would you like to proceed up until 6:00 PM or would you like to have Todd come back and do the CFP at a later, on next week's agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Just a heads up, I, I believe the folks are going to have to reboot the system and it's going to take about 10 minutes for it to get back up and running. And so we, we need, we need to add 10 minutes in there somewhere for them to be able to do that before the six o'clock meeting.
Okay. Well, how about I suggest we do action item number eight, and then we go ahead and break, and we can reschedule the CFP. There's nothing that says it needs to be this evening anyways, if that works for everybody. So with that, do I have a motion on item number seven? Do I need a mo- motion, Mr. Nary, to?
We, we probably should make a motion to continue it to next week, sir.
So to, to confirm, we're, we're going to continue item number seven till next week or later on in the evening?
Take next week.
Next week.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue item number seven, Finance Department Conference Financial Plan Discussion to next week.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to continue this item to next week's discussion. If not, I was a favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Thank Todd, we'll, we'll get you back on. So item eight, under action items, election of the city, 2021 City Council President and Vice President.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'll gladly kick it off. It's been a challenging year, and, and I think our council's been served very well with some of the folks who've led us this past year. No surprise, so I'm going to make a, a motion or a nomination, I guess I should say, a nomination for Councilman Tred Burt to continue for a second year as council president.
Second the motion. Nomination.
I have a motion, a second, for Councilman Burt to continue as council president. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, do we need a roll call though? I don't think we do. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Councilman Burt. Would you like to do your speech now or later?
No speech. I, I appreciate each and every one of you guys. You guys are like family, appreciate the support. This has been an interesting year, this past year. COVID has sort of put a kink in different policy things that we've all wanted to accomplish, but at the end of the day, it's been, it's been a great opportunity to get to know each and every one of you better, especially Councilmember Schrader and Perro. It's been great. So 2021, it's this hope for a, a different situation, maybe in a way that we can maybe accomplish a little bit more and, and get a little bit more things on the docket, but ultimately, I really appreciate the support and looking forward to 2021.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm not sure if it was stated previously, but I would be very happy to nominate Councilman Hoagland as the Vice President for City Council this year. I think he's done a great job, if he's up for it.
Second the nomination, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second, for Councilman Hoagland to be Vice President. Is there a further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I, I, I feel sometimes in, in making decisions or deliberating that I often think to myself, what would Councilman Hoagland do? He's a, he's a.
I'll remember that.
He's a dear, he's a dear friend and, and honestly, without, I know you're kidding, but I'm, I'm being serious. I, I, I look, he's been, he's been a great support to me. He's been, he's been there for me when I, when I needed direction and when I needed a little bit of someone to, you know, punch me in the teeth maybe to get, get me back on track, so I, I really appreciate Brad and all he's done. I appreciate his support.
Is there any further discussion on the motion and nomination? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Councilman Hoagland. Any remarks you'd like to make?
Well, thank you. Appreciate the council's support and, and Councilman Burt, just don't talk to my wife. I think she might have a different opinion at times, so.
Got it.
Well, well, thank you. I, I look forward to working with you both again during this next year. I'm excited to continue to build on this team and the relationships we all have with one another. So with that, we will move on to item number nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we go into executive session prior to code 74-206-A1A and 74-206-1D.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to go into executive session. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, could we call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and we'll adjourn into executive session. All ayes, motion carries, and we'll adjourn into executive session.
Testing, test, test. Can you hear through, you're hearing that? Check, 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 check. Test, test, test.
There was some work done on the audio system in December, right? Is this?
Pastor Enos, can you hear us now?
I can, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, there we go. We, I think we've got it fixed now. If you want to go ahead and, and we're ready for you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Mayor Simison and council members, for the privilege of praying for you in this meeting, and let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we just thank you for your great grace to us, Lord, as a community, and, Lord, just the blessing that we have experienced as a city. Lord, thank you for each member of this council, and, Lord, their dedication in what they give to our city and serving and leading. Lord, we ask, Lord, just your blessing on this council meeting tonight. We pray, Lord, that you would grant them your wisdom and your mind on each and every item that they will discuss. We pray, Lord, that there would be just unity and being able to come to creative solutions for any challenges they might face. And, Lord, we pray, Lord, your blessing upon our city and our nation. Lord, we are living in very tumultuous times right now, and we need your grace that would unify our hearts and bring us together. And, Lord, we continue to pray against the coronavirus, that it would cease and would, we pray your protection over each member and family of our city. And we just thank you again for the privilege to be in this community, in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
A move that we adopt, the agenda is presented, is published.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn our workshop meeting, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Robert, are you talking?
The ayes have it. Yes, can you, can those on?
Can everyone else hear me?
I can't hear him.
Okay. The ayes have it, and we are-
I've turned everything else off.
Out of executive session.
Oh.
Councilman Burr.
Thank you.
Adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn our workshop meeting, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and we are adjourned. Counsel, we will call our meeting into order. For the record, it is Tuesday, January 12th, 6:06 PM, and we will begin tonight's regular City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all rise and join us in the pledge.
I, of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn our workshop meeting, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and we are adjourned. Counsel, we will call our meeting into order. For the record, it is Tuesday, January 12th, 6:06 PM, and we will begin tonight's regular City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all rise and join us in the pledge.
I, of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did we lose you guys?
Can't hear. Can't hear.
There was some work done on the audio system in December, right? Is this?
Pastor Enos, can you hear us now?
I can, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, there we go. We, I think we've got it fixed now. If you want to go ahead and, and we're ready for you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Mayor Simison and council members, for the privilege of praying for you in this meeting, and let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we just thank you for your great grace to us, Lord, as a community, and, Lord, just the blessing that we have experienced as a city. Lord, thank you for each member of this council, and, Lord, their dedication in what they give to our city and serving and leading. Lord, we ask, Lord, just your blessing on this council meeting tonight. We pray, Lord, that you would grant them your wisdom and your mind on each and every item that they will discuss. We pray, Lord, that there would be just unity and being able to come to creative solutions for any challenges they might face. And, Lord, we pray, Lord, your blessing upon our city and our nation. Lord, we are living in very tumultuous times right now, and we need your grace that would unify our hearts and bring us together. And, Lord, we continue to pray against the coronavirus, that it would cease and would, we pray your protection over each member and family of our city. And we just thank you again for the privilege to be in this community, in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
A move that we adopt, the agenda is presented, is published.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda is published, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up into the public forum?
Mr. Mayor, for that portion, we did not.
Okay, then we will move into action items. Our first item is a public hearing for Volante Investments, H 2020-0118. Do I, Mr. Neri, based upon the actions that are requested, do I need to open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we would need to open.
Okay, then I will go ahead and open this public hearing and turn over our staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first item before you is a development agreement modification for Volante Investments. The applicant is requesting this project be tabled in order to submit concurrent applications for a conditional use permit and a subdivision. And I believe the applicant is online if you have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Don't have the full list, but do we have the applicant? They'd like to make any comments at this time? Tamara, would you like to be recognized for 15 minutes? We can't hear you. You're muted. Yeah, we don't, nothing we hear yet. Tamara, if you'd prefer to have you just call in on a cellphone, if you would prefer to do that? And.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I could answer any questions if the council does have any on this request.
I don't know if council has any questions. It seems, just giving the applicant their opportunity to make their comments.
I'm, I'm okay. I don't need to make anything.
Okay, we can, I heard very faint audio that says she was okay, so I'll assume that you're okay with no comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Council, based on what you heard, would you like any further action or comments, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I guess maybe a question. I know we've got, I don't, I know we've got some attendees in the room. I guess I would want to make sure that whatever date that we were proposing to continue, that the public would be able to attend that meeting as well.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant is not requesting a date certain. This project is requested to be tabled until such time as they can submit those additional applications, which will require a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission before it gets back to council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was going to add, is it simply they're tabling it because it will catch up to that and they'll all be noticed for a future meeting?
Okay, I've never heard us table a, a public hearing. That's why I was wondering if we were to open it or not. So how do you table a public hearing?
Oh, so all, the, the motion would be to table the, the matter and allow then the new application and, I don't remember if it's a CUP or just a plat.
Yes.
New application to be submitted and go through the planning and zoning process and then, and then marry it up to this application at a future council date. And all of it will be noticed to the public.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
One second, Councilman Strater. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody that signed up for this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did. Bill Schuler, who is on now, did sign up.
Okay, Mr. Schuler, if, if you would like to provide any comments on this, if you can use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen and we can bring you into the meeting for any comments. Looks like he does. So we'll recognize you for three minutes once the clerk gets you in, and then when that happens, if you can say your name and address for the record.
He should be able to speak now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Hey, my, can everybody hear me, first of all?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Bill Schuler. I live at 2103 South Wymerender Way, which is in the Sportsman's Point subdivision at the corner of Locust Grove and Overland. I have been a resident here for 17 years. And for full disclosure, I am the Secretary of our Homeowners Association, and I'm also precinct committee person for 2101. I don't know if it makes sense for me, but I object to the permit or this building in this area. My experience of living here and having lived here is that Overland through this stretch of road is overburdened as is. In the morning, there are times where I have to wait 20 minutes just to get outside of my subdivision. And in the evening, coming back, it can be anywhere from five to 10 minutes to turn back into the subdivision. During the morning hours, the rush hours with Mountain View High School and Dutch Brothers, believe it or not, causes great backup. There are times that there is backup at Locust Grove and Overland all the way to Millennium. And then once again at Eagle Road for traffic trying to turn left onto Eagle, that it could take five or six cycles for people to actually make that turn. In effect, Overland becomes a single lane road because the traffic in the turn lane is backed up all the way to Wells. In the evening, it's even worse. With all the people coming off the interstate that are trying to get to their homes within this area, plus all the businesses, call centers that are at the Silver Point, strip mall, I guess what I would call it, I'm not sure. And with all the traffic that's coming off the interstate, the, the traffic is often backed up all the way from Eagle Road to Locust Grove and at the stoplight at Millennium. And then once again, that same traffic gets backed up all the way from South Fifth to Meridian Road. Overland Road is, is well overburdened at this point in time. And adding an apartment complex or multifamily subdivision in there, it will even burden it more. And we still don't even know what the impact of the road's going to be for the new office buildings that are going up at Idaho Central Credit Union and Harris CPA. I mean, we, those buildings aren't even built out yet, and there's going to be an impact to Overland and, and this area. And we don't even know what that is, and now we're trying, talking about adding an apartment complex. I can tell you, as a resident, Overland cannot handle any more burden at this point in time with the infrastructure we have. And that's all I have to say unless there's questions.
Mr. Schuler, council, any questions? Thank you. Was there anybody else online on the Zoom call who was wanting to provide testimony on this item? If you can indicate by using the raise your hand feature. I see nobody else looking to raise their hand. Councilwoman Strater, you had wanted to speak on if that was what you were referencing was the public. Okay. With that, council, do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor, the.
Councilman Hoagland?
Yes, question for Bill. I, we would probably follow the same process of closing a public hearing, making a motion for that first, and then tabling the issue?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would just leave it open and, and just table it because, again, we're going to add it to the additional application. I don't want any question about whether that's applicable or not, so I think leaving it open is fine.
Thank you, Bill.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, I move we table item one, H-2020-0118 to a future date. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr. I have a motion a second to table this item to a future date. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
All ayes, motion carries, and this item will be tabled to another day. Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties. We're going to take some of that blame for, for you, Tamara. Don't worry. Next item is a public hearing for South Ridge South, H 2020-0083. We will open this public hearing with staff comments. I'll turn this over to Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next item is a request for a rezone and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 84 acres of land, R2 and R4, located on the south side of West Overland Road, east of South Ten Mile Road, and is part of the larger 291-acre South Ridge development, currently in the development process to the east. South Ridge encompasses land on the south side of Overland Road from this property to the east to Linder Road, and to the south to Val Vista and Aspen Cove subdivisions. And this property's got quite a bit of history on it, so I'm just going to go into that for a moment here. This property was annexed back in 2007 with a development agreement that was later replaced a couple of times with new development agreements. The existing agreement requires a minimum of 1,000 and a maximum of 1,286 residential units consisting of a mix of apartments and single-family residential homes to develop in the overall South Ridge development, unless otherwise specifically approved by council through subsequent applications. Subsequent development agreement modification applications were approved that removed the two apartment projects east from the overall South Ridge Development Agreement and placed them in agreements of their own, which no longer tied them to the terms of the original agreement. With the 640 units anticipated to develop in South Ridge Apartments, 336 units in Linder and Overland Apartments, 221 single-family residential units in South Ridge Phases 1 through 5, and 254 in the proposed development, that's a total of 1,451 units, which is 165 units over that originally anticipated in the development agreement. Mostly, the difference is in the apartment units, which were approved through subsequent applications, i.e. 848 were anticipated and 976 were approved. The single-family residential units were anticipated to consist of 438 units or a balance to total 1,286 total units with the apartment units. The total number of single-family units in the overall development, if this development is approved, will be 475, which is approximately 37 over that originally anticipated. Because the subject plat is considered a subsequent application as described in the development agreement, staff finds the proposal in compliance with the agreement without a modification to that agreement. A preliminary plat was approved with the annexation that included the subject property as mega lots for future re-subdivision. The existing development agreement does not include a concept plan for this site and only governs the number of lots anticipated for future development, which can be modified through a subsequent application approved by council. The comprehensive plan Future Land Use Map designations for this site are low-density residential, which is approximately 5 and 1/2 acres, and medium-density residential, which is approximately 78 acres. A rezone of 7.15 acres of land is proposed from the R4 to the R2 zoning district. And if you can see that here, that, that's along the southern and western boundaries of the site. And 28.89 acres of land from the R2 and R4 to the R8 zoning district for the development of 254 single-family detached homes at a gross density of three units per acre, consistent with the density desired in the comprehensive plan for this area. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of 254 buildable lots, 29 common lots, on 83.77 acres of land in the proposed R2 and R8 zoning districts. The minimum lot size proposed is 4,369 square feet with an average lot size of 8,053 square feet. The plat is proposed to develop in four phases, as shown on the phasing plan on the right. Staff worked with the applicant to modify the phasing plan prior to the hearing to include the large 3.8-acre common area where a clubhouse, pool, and tot lot is proposed to develop in the second phase, along with the bridge and extension of a stub street to the east, instead of with the fir-, fourth phase as originally proposed. And that is this area right here, and the street we're talking about with the bridge is right here. You can see my pointer. There is one existing home on this site that is proposed to remain on a lot in the proposed subdivision, and that is the Rice Parcel, which is right here where my pointer is. Access is proposed via one public street and one emergency access via Overland Road. Stub streets are proposed to the west, south, and east for future extension. Off-street parking will be provided in accord with UDC standards on individual lots. On-street parking for guests can also be accommodated on both sides of public streets. Public streets and three common driveways are proposed for internal circulation and access to lots. Detached sidewalks with the landscape parkways are proposed throughout the development. The Reidenbach Canal runs along the northeast side of this development and is a large open waterway that is required to be piped unless left open and approved as a water amenity or linear open space. The applicant requests a council waiver to this requirement to allow the canal to remain open and proposes to construct six-foot-tall chain-link fencing along the waterway to preserve public safety. The Williams Northwest Gas Pipeline bisects the southwest corner of this site within a 75-foot-wide easement, and that is that hatched area right here, and is contained within common lots. A 35-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Overland Road and entryway corridor. 10-foot-wide multi-use pathways are proposed in accord with the Pathways Master Plan on the site within the street buffers along Overland Road, along the Reidenbach Canal, and along the Williams Pipeline. Qualified open space is proposed in excess of UDC standards. A minimum of 10% or 8.38 acres is required. A total of 24 acres or 29% is proposed, consisting of half of the street buffer along Overland Road, linear open space, and open grassy areas of at least 50 by 100 feet in area. A minimum of four side amenities are required. A clubhouse, swimming pool, tot lot with children's play equipment, three different segments of multi-use pathways, and additional qualified open space above the standards are proposed in excess of UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations are proposed for each of the different lot widths proposed for 40-foot, 50-foot, and 60-foot wide lots. And the commission did recommend approval of these applications, and I'll just go through a summary of the hearing. Tamara Thompson and Jason Densmer from the land group, they are the applicant's representatives, testified in favor. There were several folks, well, actually, don't like, a couple folks that testified, commented on the application, and that was Scott Nichols. He testified on behalf of himself and his neighbors, the Eltons, Prispos, and Vogelmoors. And then Mike Vogelmore also testified. Written testimony was received from Tamara Thompson, the land group, the applicant's representative, Ken and Sherry Fawcett, Scott and Jennifer Nichols, Curtis and Naomi Elton, Steve and Susan Prispos, and Michael and Brenda Vogelmore. Key issues of public testimony were as follows. The neighbors to the south in Val Vista subdivision would like their viewship that's preserved with development. Mr. Nichols is agreeable to the location of the stub street to the south to his property. They would like a condition placed on this development and the associated housing to only allow dark sky compliant lighting so that it doesn't encroach on their properties. Preference for the two lots east of the sub-street to the south, lots one and two, block 10, and that's these lots right here, if you can see my pointer down at the southwest corner, to be shifted to the common area, and that's the lot three, block 10, to the northwest, this area right there. They would like the height of the residential vegetation adjacent to Val Vista subdivision fence to be limited to 10 feet above ground level so views aren't obstructed. They would like suitable drainage for irrigation and runoff to be maintained from the west and the South Ridge fence northwest towards Overland Road. And the Fawcettes are against the proposed R8 zoning and would like the stub street to the south shifted further to the west between lots four and five, block 10. And that is in, I believe it's this area right here. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows. The majority of the commission did not feel another housing type was necessary to be provided within the development as originally recommended by staff. They felt. They felt the variety of lot sizes, along with the apartments to the east, is sufficient. Their request for a 10-foot limit on the height of residential vegetation on lots abutting Val Vista subdivision and the difficulty in enforcing such a requirement. They would like to see the common open space better distributed near the smaller R8-zone lots. Most of the common area is near the larger lots. And finally, they weren't in favor of the proposed common driveways providing access to the sick lots on the east end of the development, and that's these lots right here. They preferred a restriction of no more than four lots accessed via the common driveways. The commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. The commission recommended the applicant consider replacing a few of the buildable lots in the R8 area with common area. And this was not a, this was only a recommendation, not a requirement. And the commission also recommended the applicant consider reducing the number of units accessed from the common driveways. And the commission did not require another housing type to be provided within the development. The only outstanding issue for council tonight is the applicant's request for a waiver to UDC 113A6B to allow the Reidenbach Canal to remain open and not be piped. Since the last hearing, the applicant did submit a revised plat, landscape plan, and qualified open space exhibit that includes an approximate half-acre park in Lot 15, Block 4, in the R8 portion of the development, and that's this area right here, where smaller lots are proposed in response to the commission's recommendation. Written testimony has been received since the commission hearing, actually, just an hour or so ago, from Jim Jewitt. He owns the 100, or, excuse me, 1.25-acre property at the northwest corner of the development, and that's this property right here. He is concerned that with the proposed phasing plan, that sewer service won't be available to his property for development purposes until the fourth phase. And he would, he's trying to work with the developer of this property to see what they can do. He'd prefer it happen with the first phase. That's all staff has, unless the council has any questions.
Thank you. Sonya, council, any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you very much. It looks like we have Tamara still with us. I don't know if you've got your audio fixed, figured out?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Is it working?
Yep.
You can, you can hear me?
Yep.
I didn't change anything, so I'm not sure. It was just gremlins or something, so.
You recognize your 15 minutes. If you can say your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with the Land Group. We're at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. And tonight with me, I am, is Jason Densmer. He's the engineer for the project. And if it's okay, I will share my screen. Let's see here. All right. Are you seeing that? Yes, perfect. All right. Before you tonight is a South Ridge South subdivision. This is a rezone and preliminary plat application. As Sonya mentioned, the property is located south of West Overland Road, east of South Ten Mile Road, and the property was annexed in 2007. It has a development agreement that has been in place since 2012, the current version since 2012. A rezone is necessary to clean up the zoning boundaries, and I colored that up for you, so it was a little easier to see the, with the R8 zone for the majority of it and the R2 to the south. The zoning boundaries are consistent with the proposed lot configurations, and the proposed zones are consistent with the development agreement and the future land use map for the area. And this just shows you, this is the concept plan that is with the development agreement. So one of the things we wanted to show here is just the overall master concept plan and the variety of residential product types. That was a topic of conversation with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but they, with the entire development, there is a considerable amount of variety with apartments and patio homes, both alley-loaded, narrow lots. There's an elementary school site nearby, so this, the Planning and Zoning Commission decided that the variety was there, and we are providing three product types with this development. So this is the layout of the preliminary plat. 254 single-family lots. They're proposed in four phases, and services are readily available to serve the site. The, this is a colored plan to show you the various open spaces. And we are at 23.96 acres, which is 28% open space within 29 common lots. The amenities include essentially located clubhouse, swimming pool, tot lot, play equipment. And the one thing that was added from what Planning and Zoning saw is we added a pocket park in the R8 zone, so that it wasn't so far. The other areas, we had different parks, and it wasn't a condition of approval, but we decided to add it because it was a topic of conversation, and it definitely made sense. And just so you can see, I just added this here, so you could see this. This is what Planning and Zoning looked at, and it did not have that pocket park. The other areas that we've added to this, of note, are the amenities. We have a multi-use pathway that runs along Overland Road. The multi-use pathway also continues down the Reidenbach Canal, and it crosses over to the east, and you can make it to Linder Road with that, that multi-use pathway. We also have the multi-use pathway that runs underneath this, or runs in this gas, gas line corridor as well. All of the units are single-family residential, and there are three different product types. Sonya went through these quickly. We have 60-foot lots, and these are the homestyles proposed for those lots. 50-foot lots, and these are the homestyles for the 50-foot, and then the 40-foot lots. And I will let Jason speak now. If, Jason, did you have anything to add here? Is he in?
Mr. Mayor, Jason is coming in now.
Okay.
Thank you, Tamara. This is Jason of the Land Group. I have the same address, and I don't have anything to add at this time.
All right. Thanks, Jason. So with that, we've, we've read the staff report. We agree with staff's analysis and the recommended conditions of approval. We respectfully request your approval tonight with the addition of the council waiver to allow the Reidenbach Canal to remain open. And we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton.
Thank you. Tamara, did you have an exhibit which shows the, the properties adjacent to the Reidenbach Canal and that open space? I didn't see anything in the materials, but when you show the open space exhibit, it, the property boundary looks like it, it juts into the canal, and you probably didn't give it a fair appearance. It looks like along that north boundary, I don't know if it goes into and across the Reidenbach, or what's going on there?
So.
Councilmember Borton, this is Jason Densmer of the Land Group. I can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
For portions of that northwest, northeast boundary of the project, the, the common lot goes both, I guess, to the full width of the Evermaridian's easement, and in other portions of it, just the way the mega lots that Sonya mentioned earlier were laid out, the boundary line is the center line of the canal. So in some cases, it's on the center line of the canal, and on other segments, it's on the north boundary of their easement.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, follow up. So looking at this, the green space north of the blue line, which must be the center line of the Reidenbach, isn't actually green space, open space necessarily, is it?
Correct. It is common lot or common area within the project, but it's not included in the calculated qualified open space per UDC requirements.
Okay. One last follow-up on that topic. There was reference in the staff report, and I think Sonya mentioned it, that on these properties along the north and the northeast, clarify for me, is it, is the property, perhaps property fencing, open space, and a pathway? And then there's reference to a chain-link fencing, which might be utilized before the canal? Is that, is that described correctly?
Yes. I'll do my best to paint a mental picture verbally. The, the rear lots, the rear line of the residential lots would be fenced with an open-style metal fencing. And then the city multi-use pathway would be constructed within the Evermaridian's Reidenbach Canal easement. And then separating the pathway from the actual canal would be a chain-link fence. Then the canal happens, and then on the north side of the canal is the irrigation district's access and maintenance route.
So, well, I guess one last question on this point, because I guess a quick question for the applicant, or maybe for Sonya, but I recall in other areas of the town where chain-link is utilized, and it really is an attractive eyesore. The canal, you know, by its nature is oftentimes weedy, uncapped, and it's, you know, this is a big facility. So the chain-link coupled with weeds adjacent to a pathway is not the most attractive element for a community that looks as nice as this. So I don't know if the chain-link is common. Yeah, maybe the staff report sounds like it is maybe around here, but there's nothing attractive or appealing about chain-link other than its cost, which I understand. So if this is how it's always done, let me know, but it seems a bit odd for something this nice.
Councilmember Borton, we don't disagree necessarily, and we'd be happy to look at that within the context of Nevermarian's approval for the fence material, because it is occurring within their easement. We may be restricted by their requirements.
But if not, there might be other fencing styles that could be utilized here?
Possibly, yes. There's also, of course, a desire to remain consistent with the prior phases of the South Ridge subdivision, which are just to the east. So we would want to keep all of that in mind, but we're open to looking at that fence type.
Yeah, thank you.
And I know we have Mr. White on the line from the Parks and Rec Department. If he does not know the answer, perhaps he could reach out. My familiarity with the area along the Reidenbach is chain-link and South Evermarian. Or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm not sure if it's chain-link or if it's the, just the basic metal open fencing. I can reach out real fast and see if I can.
What if you could do that while we're taking public testimony? That'd be great.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hoggland.
Yeah, question right there in the lower right, number 11, with, with the arrow. It, it looks like to me that the common driveways are providing access to six homes. Is that still how it's planned to be? I know that was a discussion with the commission, and they recommended reducing that number. What, what's the plan for that particular setup?
This is Jason of the Land Group. I think I can speak to that again. The P&amp;Z Commission did express some reservations about six lots accessed from a common driveway, which does comply with the UDC requirements. The particular construction and the layout of those lots there is, it's quite steep topography to the south. Those, the main street from east to west is quite a bit lower than the adjacent properties in the Val Vista and Aspen Cove subdivisions across the property line. And so topography, to some extent, is really governing the available options that we have to lay out the lots and streets. That configuration that we've proposed with the six lots accessed from the single common drive is already been used for four other common driveways within the existing South Ridge subdivision just to the east, and has been very successful in providing access to the homes, meeting fire department requirements, and really coming up with that little enclave of six homes that really can be constructed as a small neighborhood. So, thank you, Tamara, for sharing a picture. That's an example of one, a very similar construction on a common driveway, just say about 800 feet to the east within the project.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Jason, that, that photo's very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Strater.
A follow-up question for you, Jason. How, how wide is a common driveway? I think that would help me wrap my head around it, and it, the picture, this picture, this example, looks like it's pretty wide, and there's room to maneuver, but it, do you widen these to make it more accessible for the fire department, or to provide more parking? Or how do you sort of get ahead of these logistical issues that come with common driveways when you have this configuration?
Yeah, the fire department requirements are really integral to the design. And so the width of the driveway is 20 feet to meet their standards. The common lot that the common drive is inside of is 30 feet wide, so there's actually five feet of common space beyond the paved surface on either side. And then the length of the driveway is established by the maximum amount that the fire department would go in without having to turn around at the, at the end. So those various parameters are really the aspects that we looked at when we laid out those two common driveways in the project.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, one last question. I apologize.
Councilman Burt.
So in the staff's presentation, they mentioned that the original amount of single-family residents were, units were 438, and it's been increased roughly by 40. Is there a reason for the increase of, in density in this project?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Were you asking staff or the applicant?
Whoever, probably the applicant. I was just referencing that, I heard that in your presentation.
Yes, I thought you were asking the applicant, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't sure either. The increase in total lot count was really centered around what makes a practical layout for the project. The original development agreement and the master concept plan that was attached to it was a, was a suggestion of how the property might develop at the time that that development agreement was last modified in 2012. Since then, there's been a, you know, a rethinking of that master plan, and although we're largely consistent Since then, there's been a rethinking of that master plan and although we're largely consistent with the original layout in terms of streets and blocks and the overall feel of the development, there have been some adjustments in the placement of lots and the numbers and it just so happened that that redesign ended up with kind of the most suitable configuration of lots being a total of 37 more than the original concept plan had been.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. This is a question for the applicant. In the staff presentation, they said that the average lot sizes are running 4369 square feet to 8,053 square feet. Is that an average over the R8 and the R2? As a total or is there, do you have separate averages for, just, I guess I'm trying to understand a couple of things, one is, is there, there's transition being accounted for between the south side of this property and the neighboring subdivision to the south, but is there good transition existing, you know, within the lots? In the lots within the subdivision itself, so what are your average lot sizes? In, you know, in the R8 section, or can you kind of give us an idea, I guess, of where the 40 foot, 50 foot and 60 foot lots are in relationship to the larger lots to the south, something like that?
I don't think that we've parsed the lot statistics quite at the level that you were asking about. The 4,369 square foot lot is the smallest lot within the whole project and it's one of the R8 lots. It's in that block of lots that's indicated by number four on the screen. There are also some lots that are quite large, I'm just trying to find what the largest is, the 8,000 square foot figure that you referenced is actually the average lot size across all of the lots. But there are lots that approach, I believe a half an acre in size or more along the R2 properties and that border the property in the south, the Aspen Cove and Valvista subdivisions.
I don't see any further questions for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor. If, maybe just to ask if the applicant would like to comment on any items they can do to address concerns of the neighbors that may remain at this point?
I think maybe we would prefer, we did respond to the neighbors' comments at the time of the planning and zoning commission hearing. And rather than assume what they might say this evening, I think I'd rather withhold any response to their comments until after we've had a chance to hear them.
Mr. Mayor. I think that the tricky thing is there's one mayor specifically that just just submitted a letter and can't attend because of COVID, so we'll have to find our way through that issue. But that's just, you may not have seen that letter, so. That's okay, I'm sure we're gonna try to tackle that.
Mr. Mayor.
White.
I just spoke with Kim Warner, Parks Pathways Manager. And she basically said that, you know, she doesn't recall any other chain link along that pathway or along that canal. Although to Councilman Borton's point, we typically don't approve the chain link. We typically approve the wrought iron type of looking fencing and with that, I don't know if Sonya has anything to add regarding code with that, but that's typically the answer we got.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I did ask the applicant about their choice of fencing, I was not in favor of it either. They did say that that was the type of fencing that they had constructed in earlier phases and I don't remember off the top of my head how many phases have been developed right next to the Ridenbaugh where it has been constructed, but to ensure consistency, I didn't include a condition of approval for a different type of fencing, our code doesn't specify type of fencing only open vision or, or such that you know, maintains public safety adjacent to the waterways.
Mr. Mayor, this is Warren. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Short.
Yeah, having had to work with Nampa Meridian Irrigation District for public works facilities on a number of irrigation ditches and canals and so forth in the city, at least in the past, chain link fencing has been a requirement at Nampa Meridian Irrigation District. They want something that they aren't going to damage if they spray it, burn next again against it and things like that, so that has been Nampa Meridian Irrigation District requirement of the Public Works Department before. So that wouldn't surprise me if that was the case, but it's been a while, maybe they've changed their opinion, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, my experience with that in the past has been that they'll allow wrought iron fencing as well. Not sure if Mr. Stewart considered that, but then that's safe if they're burning ditches and whatnot.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
As we move on to the, kind of the next topic, I think an example of that type of fencing which can be looked at as we continue on is where the Ridenbaugh crosses Locust Grove. Is an example of what Sonya is talking about, it's open vision metal, but it's, it's not chain link, it's just a much more attractive design, so we can publicly pull that up at some point down the road and give that a look and see if the applicant likes that.
Speaking on the density question that I had earlier. I don't know, looking at my screen, these numbers if they're phases or not, so I'm not quite sure. I'm assuming that they might be, but what would make these numbered phases or these numbered areas that I'm looking at on the screen? What would make these areas and type of product planned for built, for building, for these phases different from other areas in this development and also maybe even the development to the east? Is there something unique in there that's requiring, I guess what I'm asking, is there something unique there that's requiring this much density?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I may be able to answer that question if I could jump in. The majority of this property is within the medium density residential future land use map designation, which requires a density between three and eight units per acre. And I believe they're right at three units per acre with what is proposed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Maybe a follow up to Councilman Burns' question. How do you look at that when most of the property is within a certain designation, do you like prorate? I mean, if you, do you say, okay, 90% of this would be three to eight units per acre, maybe 10% is another density, do you then like adjust it that way or based on the space? Or how do you look at what we would target?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, I assume that was a question for staff. You know, it's it's kind of all those things. In this case, the low density residential designated area was not very much of the site and they are providing larger lots and zoning that transition to the neighboring larger lots. So that's something that staff really looks at. That, I don't know if the applicant has a breakdown, the density of just the low density designated area. But yeah, the density that I gave earlier, the three units per acre was overall.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
God, it sounds like in your opinion it's more of an art than a science. Do you have a rough guideline of what the percentage was that would have been low out of the total or the applicant?
Now, I believe it was like five acres of the site approximately that's designated low density residential. The reason it's not an exact science, Councilwoman Strater, is because the comprehensive plan is a guide, it's, it's not a standard.
Yep, I got it.
So any additional questions for the applicant? Councilman Strater.
I apologize, maybe one more shot at is there any update on just the discussions with Mr. Jewett and his sewer concerns from the applicant's perspective? And then I would ask staff if, if those concerns were something we needed to address from a city perspective?
This is Jason at the land group, I joined a pre-application meeting with Mr. Jewett today with city staff where we talked at some length about sewer availability to his parcel. The, there is sewer available to him from Overland Road, although reaching it in the middle of Overland Road is certainly more complicated. There will be with construction of phase one of the Southridge South project, anticipating your hopeful approval of the project this evening. There will be additional sewer available with the phase one portion at the east side of the Williams Gas Pipeline, which puts it within, say, 100 or 150 feet of Mr. Jewett's property. The developer, and I spoke about that briefly this evening and understanding that phase one will certainly happen before the other phases. If Mr. Jewett needed to access that sewer prior to the construction of the phase four portion of the project that would actually physically deliver the sewer along Mr. Jewett's property frontage, the developer would be willing to make an easement available to Mr. Jewett for the cross through the phase four portion in alignment that would allow him to access that sewer sooner than the project would normally build it in its in its normal sequence. So that, I think, would at least provide Mr. Jewett the ability to reach the sanitary sewer without being held up by the fact that this project wouldn't bring it to his frontage until phase four.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. You're muted.
Councilman Pro, I couldn't tell who said it, so.
What's that?
I couldn't tell who was asking to speak, so.
Oh, sorry. Along those same lines, to follow up question on, on that for the applicant, so I briefly scanned the letter that Mr. Jewett sent in and it doesn't really specify his concerns about receiving access in phase one or phase four. Did he express to you the reasoning, is he concerned about not receiving access at all? Or is there a timing concern for him? That, did he express specifically what that issue would be? I know you can't speak for him, but just in relationship to the conversations that you've had.
I believe all of those things would be of concern to him, certainly he wants access to sewer ultimately, but also as early as possible to facilitate, facilitate his development. So I think there's both a timing and then just an overall accessibility question. Certainly, we understand and have anticipated that sewer would be provided to him. I would say that his primary concern is just timing related.
Council, just to or the comments I made earlier about the Ridenbaugh Canal, I can confirm that there's two types of fencing in South Meridian related to this. There is a black chain link as well as a black wrought iron that ventures at least along the road from Locust Grove up to as far as Stoddard along city pathways. So multiple types, four foot, black fencing. Don't know what Napa Meridian is, you know, those were reflection ridge and then a lot older subdivision, so things could have changed, but that's what is, at least there are multiple types. So with that, if there are no further questions for the applicant from council, Mr. Clerk. I assume we have some people signed up to testify on the side this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we had one person sign up in advance and that's Scott Nichols and he's available to turn on his microphone now.
Okay, Mr. Nichols, you're recognized for three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, I represent four owners along the south side of Southridge subdivision. I hope I have a few seconds over three minutes, but my address is.
We'll recognize you for 10 minutes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I live at 2730 West Valvista Court, Meridian, Idaho 3642. First, I want to say thank you to the council and thank you to the land group for continuing this collaborative discussion through the city council meeting. We have been discussing this with the land group and the developer for, I think, about 14 years now. And I just want to say thank you to Jason Densberg and his team and the developer for the concessions that they made. We started out 14 years ago with the idea that the entire parcel in question was going to be covered in houses. And we, at that time, recognized that the neighboring land uses of this rural residential supporting horses, cows, mules, goats, whatever. There could be some conflicts, we also recognized that we had some view lots and while we didn't object to the development, we have always wanted to pursue some avenue to retain some semblance of the view lots that, that we all purchased along the north side of the subdivision. We've never ever considered the fact that this parcel wouldn't be developed and we're certainly not opposed to that tonight, but we hope that this collaborative process can continue, at least with some one last discussion on what we might be able to do to address this last concern that we have. At the planning and zoning meeting, the neighbors and I had talked and they had encouraged me to ask for the farm when we all knew that we might get a, you know, a portion of it. And if we can, Tamara, are you available to pull up your screen?
Yes, sir, what would you like to see?
If you just go down to that south edge of Valvista or the north edge of Valvista and the south edge of Southridge where the development is, that would be great. I think you might have the area in question that we talked about with some lot adjustments up, I don't know if you have that available or not. But for the, for the record, I'd like to just make it known for the mayor and council that we originally went into this planning with the idea that there were about 14, what is it, 1,296 family units out here on this lot from Linder to Ten Mile, from Valvista and Aspen Cove north to Overland. Through a series of modifications and I don't know how the development process works, but I can tell you that the community feels a little bit, and we're not objecting, but the community does feel a little bit, I want to say misled, that we've now gone to, I want to say, 165 additional units on the whole parcel. And so we don't object to that, we can work with that. But we've been trying to retain, as you can see, where my property is, Elton, and then to the east of me, we have two more properties that have view sheds there that look to the northwest, me to the north. And all that we've asked is that, for the record, declare, we're not worried about trees. Probably not worried about dark sky for the amount of development that's already going on in the area. But we are worried about the ability to retain some semblance of, of this view shed to the east, northeast and northwest for those three or four properties. At the planning and zoning commission meeting, we simply asked that those two lots be moved to the northwest and that, instead of being a, I want to describe it as a pocket park, one large land mass, that that park would wrap around that, that circular turnaround to the north of my. that that park would wrap around that that circular turnaround to the north of my place. You know, if my place were ever developed, that would then provide access for the developments to the south to access a park system off of the street system that could potentially be extended. That being said, that's that's really the only thing we're asking for. And with the increase of a, what, 165 units from the original planned development here, we feel that there's really no concession on the part of the developer in terms of revenue. We wouldn't ask that they be removed, just moved. And that would provide, really would allow us to retain the view value, that the designation of a view lot for Elton, Nichols, Vogomore, and to the east is Prisbos. So with that, I would, again, just thank thank Jason for the work that he's done on the house heights, the single-story 22-foot roof height, the wall that they put in and the other concessions that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Council must trader.
Thank you. I'm not sure I was totally following the request. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Nichols, just if you could specify, is it kind of which which lots you would like moved or if you could explain?
So, thank you, Councilman Strater. The two lots we are talking about, Tamara, can you highlight those two lots? Or put your cursor over them?
These two?
Go just to the north. That lot and the lot to the east, that diamond-shaped lot that those two, we actually just asked that they move those two lots to the northwest and utilize a portion of the park that is to the northwest and simply allow that park to wrap around the half circle that exists. Does that make sense, Councilman Strater?
Thank you. It does.
Okay. And, you know, the reason for that is, again, the ability to retain some semblance of the view. We understand there will be trees planted. We understand that it's going to be maintained. There'll be kids playing back there. But again, if anything were ever developed to the south, that would provide an access right off any development to the south to go north on that road into that circular area and access a a wraparound park. This was discussed at at planning and zoning and and we would ask that you consider that again.
Mr. Mayor, this is Brad. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nichols, you know that land very well, having lived there for quite a while. What what is the slope comparison to what they're proposing the houses to be versus where you would like them to move the houses? Is there a lot of difference in slope variation in those areas?
Commissioner Huglen, there's actually no difference in slope and and to be honest with you, I think it puts those houses on a little bit higher view shed. Those are still very nice view lots that overlook the remaining development to the east and and to the northeast of the of the pipeline there.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Nichols. We did have a few other people in the room. If anyone else would like to provide testimony on this item, if you can please indicate so by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen. Not seeing anybody raise their hand at this point in time. So with that, I will turn it back over to the applicant for any final remarks.
I'll dive in. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We appreciate the opportunity. In responding to the public comments from Mr. Nichols, I would echo his sentiment and his appreciation to us for having worked with him all this time. We certainly appreciate his engagement with us over those 14 years and it might actually be 15 now, Scott, not to correct you. It's certainly been a long time and he's been a valuable contributor to the planning of South Ridge throughout that time period. Just to go back for the council's benefit to the original development agreement for the property. It it included some requirements specific to the portion of South Ridge adjacent to Val Vista and Aspen Cove in order that we respect through the ongoing planning that we've been doing agreements that were made previously. The pre-plat does reflect all of these commitments that were part of the development agreement, some of which are already complete, things like construction of a six-foot-tall masonry fence along the shared property line of the south, restrictions on the heights of the homes for all of the lots that border the south. Those restrictions on on height of the homes were driven directly in response to Scott and his neighbors' comments about maintaining their view sheds. The total number of lots that are along that property line is restricted is restricted through the development agreement and that restriction is reflected in the in the proposed layout of the project. And then, I guess specifically with regards to Scott's comments about the two lots to be relocated. We've talked about that in the past, both with him and then in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the developer's perspective, and and it's one that I share, is that the location of those lots is is really better where it's been designed because it maximizes the available open space in the portion of the project that's indicated there with the number three on it. By putting the two lots along the south property line, we're able to create an open space amenity both for the project and and for others that is really cohesive. So that it's a little bit tough to tell scale, I realize that, but that that parkland, number three there is large enough to hold a football field, which provides a really active amenity to the subdivision in terms of open play area. It can support a lot more uses than it would be able to if those two lots were relocated to the north side of the cul-de-sac, which really kind of chops up the open space and makes it less useful as an amenity. That's been our perspective and certainly understand Scott and his perspective. But respectfully, we would request that the council approve the vision that we have and the plan that we presented this evening. With that, I think that closes our portion of the presentation. I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
As a as a follow-up on that fencing topic with the remarks about open vision, the black wrought iron fence being utilized along the between the pathway and the Rydenbach Canal. Is that something that you'd be willing to do in lieu of chain link?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Portman, we would prefer not to. The number that Sonia was looking for was four. There have been four previous phases of the South Ridge project already constructed along the Rydenbach. And that provided an open metal-style fencing. We would like to continue the same paradigm that has been used for those four prior phases. I guess that would be our preference.
Okay. What gives me some pause, quick follow-up, Mr. Mayor, is is it if it's a preference of doing it because it's how it's been done before, it's maybe not the most compelling argument. If if one versus the other, if the wrought iron fencing is a more attractive, appealing perimeter between multi-use pathway that we hope over the generations is used to a great degree. And this is the one and only time that chain link can be removed as the permanent boundary. And then this is the only shot you get to make it right. And the fact that it might not be attractive elsewhere isn't probably the most compelling reason to make it not attractive here as well. That's kind of the reason why I was sort of pressing on it. Otherwise, we'll just have chain link everywhere because it was chain link at the start, so. That's why some of the questions came up on it, hoping that there might have been a more attractive alternative. And then others might follow your lead on this issue adjacent to the Rydenbach with a more attractive safety barrier. That was just the explanation for the questions.
Thank you. I understand that. Certainly, if the council were to condition a different fence type, we would we would comply.
Counsel, any additional questions? Thank you very much to the applicant. Well, let the council contemplate their thoughts on how they'd like to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Just make some quick first remarks. Tamara, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a good presentation and a, quite frankly, an attractive, yet moderate pivot from what was originally annexed and platted back in '07. I think the presentation that described that region and the the mix of housing that's available, maybe not necessarily all in this specific plat, but really in the in the vicinity, helps describe that diversity of housing that we like to see. Jason, I think your explanation with regards to the open space in that southwest portion of the project, the trade-offs there, your explanation seemed to make sense and it and it really does, as platted, preserve usable open space down there. It's a large large open space and it doesn't seem to make sense that the way it's platted allows this development to utilize it better than if those two properties were moved across the street. So the school capacity seemed to be sufficient to handle it. We certainly have public safety services nearby as well. So I'm supportive of the project, really the only and and Rydenbach being open is fine as well. I wouldn't have any concern with that. The only thing that I think, maybe I'm just being a stick in the mud, but the wrought iron fencing, I think that's just an appropriate pivot. I know and I appreciate the applicant's willing to do so. If that's what it takes, I just think that's should be part of this. It's such an attractive product, especially those properties near the pathway. We want people on this pathway for generations to come. One shot to do it right, make it look attractive for the public. So I would hope that fencing could be could be wrought iron. Beyond that, I'm supportive of the project and the the rezon request.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
So I want to bring up the discussion about the schools because it should always be a conversation that we have. And the information that the district provided us does make it look like there is currently additional enrollment. However, in the staff report, Miranda on our staff did an evaluation of the lots that have already been approved, lots that have been entitled in this area, in addition to what would be what would be approved on this application. And it does put all of those schools over 100% capacity. So I don't know if that's a factor that we want to discuss, if that it they're not significantly over 100% capacity. I think it was like 102, 104, 107, something like that. I don't, I know there is an elementary school that has already been in the planning stages off of Lenders somewhere around Victory. I don't know if that will affect elementary school enrollment for this application. So just wondering if any of my fellow council members have thoughts on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Thanks for bringing that up, Councilwoman Perro. I wanted to compliment Miranda as well, just specifically out the school impact table. I don't think we've seen anything like that before. It's so detailed. I think it gives us a really clear picture. It it gives me pause. It didn't look like it was dramatically overcapacity and and the fact that the West Side of School District has now committed to us to continuously redraw their boundaries. It sounded like based on the mayor's comments last week, makes me feel a little bit more flexible, you know. But it's still an issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Yeah, just to touch on a few points. One of the things I asked about was the common lots and the the six homes. And appreciate that photo and and how it's laid out. One of the things that makes this a little different than some of the others that we've seen is the fact that there are larger lots that these driveways go into. And that that makes a big difference on the space and the ability to move and and it just it's just a better better layout that way. I I do appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission with their recommendation that there's no need for higher density. There's a lot when you look at that whole area. There's a lot of apartments and and I think going to the lower lower densities is is a good move. And there's still three housing types, so there's a good variety. The open space versus moving the lots, you know, I I sympathize with Mr. Nichols, having been on a rural property and that subdivision comes in and being able to work with the developer on that and, you know, making sure houses are lower and and different things like that. But, you know, in the end, we we did did lose our view and and it's just that open space priority in in something like this to allow, because of the densities, there's a lot more people there to provide open space for activities and kids is is very important. So I I feel for Mr. Nichols, but it's just one of those competing priorities that it's it's hard to hard to satisfy both. And in fact, you can't. So I I'm good with leaving that that open space. I do appreciate the applicant working with the property owners and trying to mitigate as much as possible. Leaving the Rydenbach open is is perfectly fine. It's it's that way elsewhere. And to Councilman Borton's point, I I agree. At what point do you start going to that higher standard instead of continuing what has been that really is, doesn't fit anymore? I I think if we were to go back and do over, it'd be nice to have a nicer fencing all along that pathway. It's going to be a great pathway. It's very lengthy. There are some choke points, as I've learned on on park tours of our pathways along the Rydenbach, but we'll figure something out down the road. So I have no problem with supporting a a black wrought iron fencing option for for this development and continuing that requirement as as things move to the west.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I share some more thoughts on the fence and in general, I think this this is a nice fit for the area. A little concerned about schools. I don't think we've totally put that to bed. If we approve this one and then we have more on Overland, maybe that number is not 106%, 110% pro forma for what we've approved. Maybe that hits 120% and that my view might evolve pretty quickly. But it doesn't feel like it's too far at this point. But it doesn't feel like it's too far at this point. Generally supportive. I, I just want to make sure that we, I guess if we have to specify, it would be good if staff would let us know if we need to specify that the neighbor will get an easement to access the sewer in phase one. I think that was important, that they made that concession. I, I might have preferred to lose two lots to create some kind of a regional park if that lot to the south were to develop, but I think it's a lot of open space and that to me is what sort of sets this one apart and maybe gets it across the finish line.
Just to note, West Seda is discussing the proposed boundary adjustments this evening. And this area is slated to be moved into Peregrine, which is very, and has a very low enrollment. But of course, by the time everything gets built, you have no idea where any of this is going to be anyways. But food, food for thought as you contemplate that, yes, West Seda is making efforts to adjust the numbers, but they'll, they're taking public feedback and you never know what's going to happen.
Great point.
Counsel, any further discussion or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Didn't hear any additional discussions. So I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing on H 2020 0083.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close name? The ayes have it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
In light of the comments and discussion that, that has just happened during deliberations, I'll make a motion that we approve H 2020 0083, the rezon and the preliminary plat as presented in the staff report of January 12th. That includes the provision that the Ridenbach Canal remain open. That requires the black wrought iron fencing along the Ridenbach Canal adjacent to the public pathway. That the, the easement concession that, that Councilwoman Strater had referenced, she may be able to clarify for me, but that's included as one of the conditions as well. And that the plat as presented is otherwise approved. Lots aren't being moved on that southwest side.
Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, a second. Councilwoman Strater.
I, I guess I'd ask Mr. Nary how much more specific we need to be in the motion. Do we need to specify that Mr. Jewett will get an access to the, an easement to access the sewer in phase one? Is that sufficient?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Strater, I, I think that's adequate because they're going to have to still determine specifically where it is before they can finalize it. So I think at this point for findings, that'll be adequate.
Thanks.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you very much for everyone for your attention to the details in this one. Next on the agenda is future meeting topics. Do we have any items? If not, executive session. Councilman Burp.
I move that we go into executive session, parade of code 74-206A1A.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burn.
All ayes and we are reset, or adj-